Okay, we're gonna start. Notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the courier news on Friday, April 10th, 2020, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McKenna.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills-Rantzen.
Present.
Vice President Armadi.
Here.
Council President Hockaday.
Here.
We have all members present in a corner.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with the mayor this evening. Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Council President. I wanted to give a COVID-19 update so that everyone has a good sense as to where we are. And so, as all of you know, Plainfield, the country and the world have been dealing with the global pandemic known to all of us as COVID-19. It has ravaged our economy, affected education from pre-K to colleges and universities, changed sports at every level, placed a temporary lid on recreation in the interest of public health, affected government services, and worst of all, it has claimed the lives of thousands of people of all ages all across the U.S. and the world. The COVID-19 virus is still with us and has shown no sign of letting up. We have been hit particularly hard here in Plainfield. As of last Friday, there were 2,267 reported positive cases of the virus in our city, and of that amount, 2,061 have recovered. A total of 3,734 people were under quarantine as a result of being in contact with individuals who had tested positive. I am one of those individuals that have been in quarantine. Of those that were in quarantine, 3,374 have emerged after testing negative for the virus. Sadly, we have lost 110 of our residents to the virus. May their souls and the souls of the faithful departed through the mercy of God rest in peace. Over the last several months, we have worked very closely in partnership with Union County, the Plainfield Neighborhood Health Services Corporation, and other providers to make testing available to all of our residents at no cost to them. As far as the COVID-19 testing is concerned, we've had 215 tests conducted by the county's mobile unit. 413 were done by the county at all of our senior buildings in the city. 1,711 tests were done at Kane University. 785 were done as a result of our contract with Salerno Medical, and 435 of city employees were tested through ETNA for a total of 3,559. These numbers reflect individuals who avail themselves to the testing as outlined by the numbers I just mentioned. However, many of our residents got tested and may emerge CVS and other testing facilities. And although the positive cases tested by those facilities have been reported to our health department, we don't know the total number of people tested at those private facilities. Out of this moment, the total number of COVID-19 positive cases in all three of our nursing homes stand at 140, and the confirmed death toll at those facilities stand at 51. When we look at the state, the racial breakdown of the reported deaths was 54% white, 20% Hispanic, 18% black, 6% Asian, and 2% of another race. Laura Murphy has noted the rates in the black and Hispanic communities are running about 50% more than the population in the state. So when we look at the numbers in terms of the ethnicity of the positive cases, 62% were Hispanic, 16% black or African-American, an unknown number to the tune of 18%, we don't know the ethnicity, 3% white, and 1% other. As you can see, blacks and Latinos are the ones most impacted by the virus, not only in Plainfield but in the state as well and across the nation also. There were 52 males and 48 females who perished from the COVID-19 virus. In terms of the deceased cases by race and ethnicity, blacks or African-American, 37%, Hispanics, 37%, whites, 18%, and unknown, 8%. Long-term care facilities, of the total number of positive cases, which stood at 140, 89 have recovered at those facilities, and 51 expired. So let me be very clear to all those who have a tendency to say the governor has opened this and has opened that, and therefore we should do the same. We will not do the same. Our municipal parks, playgrounds, and pools will not be open this year. Some of you might have heard of the stories of people having pool parties, and this evening on the news, I saw a story of a municipality where at their summer camp, a number of youngsters came down with a positive test of COVID-19. We will not knowingly, as some leaders in other parts of the country have done, place the health and well-being of our residents second to economics or anything else. My administration will not trade the health of any adult or child for our seasonal recreation. Public health is a moral and social responsibility that we take seriously, and so we will continue to keep our guards up and will not do anything that would place the health of our public at risk. So, I encourage all of you and everyone who can hear me to wear masks as mandated by the governor's executive order so as to protect yourselves, your neighbors, your friends, and everyone with whom you come in contact with. Let's all be safe and stay well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor, for that thorough update. Definitely a daunting update, especially during the lives that we lost. While I have you, you know, there was a question from, I've gotten from community members, and even I've heard some council people had the question regarding the painting on the street in front of City Hall of Black Lives Matter and the cost associated with that. Can you explain or tell us what the cost was?
Well, thank you for the question, Council President. Before I respond, let me just preface my remarks by saying that my support of the statement Black Lives Matter has absolutely nothing to do with the founders of the organization or with their beliefs, nothing whatsoever. The cost of painting the Black Lives Matter symbols, I must admit, is way too high, way too high, more than money can buy. It is the lives of Christmas addicts, Nat Turner, Emmett Till, Medgar Ever, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Michael Stewart, Eric Garner, Tamir Rice, B'Yonah Taylor, George Floyd, Richard Brooks, and so many more. It is infinite, impossible to measure. The bodies at the bottom of the ocean floor from the triangulate slave trade, the bodies on the plantations, the economic health, social, political, and criminal injustices of a racist system of oppression are but some of the costs of the Black Lives Matter symbols that are painted on city streets. So those of you who have asked about the cost, the cost is immeasurable. The feds can't make enough dollars and cents to cover the cost of the damage that has been done to the people, the people of color, black people in particular. Again, the cost of the Black Lives Matter symbols is immeasurable. Here's something to think about. Today in these United States, African-Americans continue to face widespread institutionalized systemic racism across this country. The economic cost of this institutionalized system of racism to our African-American citizens has been both psychologically devastating and economically immeasurable. The cost has been paid in blood throughout the last four centuries through the inhumane practice of slavery, the Jim Crow era that allowed the public lynching of black people, and though today, and through, and through, today I should say, where black people are unfortunately faced with police brutality. The cost of institutionalized racism has been the greatest opportunity cost levied against any group of people in the history of the world. Black people have not been allowed full citizenship and self-determination due to institutionalized racism. Black people in America have been denied jobs for which they were qualified simply due to the color of their skin. This system of denying black people the right to fairly compete for jobs continues today. Black people in this country, despite their documented contributions to the prosperity of this nation, have continued to be the people who have been required to bear the financial and psychological burden so that others may benefit from an uneven Plainfield. Black people continue to suffer from housing discrimination, with many black people openly being discouraged to live in many communities across this country, including here in New Jersey, and sadly in some communities close to us here in Plainfield, New Jersey. We have a responsibility as a community to fight injustice wherever it may live. We, as a society, cannot continue to condone an environment in which the cost of institutionalized racism against black people in this country continues to cost black people trillions of dollars in lost opportunity, and worse, continues to create an environment of hostility and microaggression that every black person is forced to contend with on a daily basis. The economic cost of institutionalized racism to this country is staggering. The continuation of systemic racism imposed an unfair tax and penalty on black people while stifling the prosperity and the economic growth of this country. There are those who are offended by the overwhelming awakening of consciousness that is occurring around this country. This consciousness has resulted in people of every color, social condition, marching together and advocating together towards the goal of America living up to its greatest ideal, equality for all. The young and the old, the people from every racial group in this country are marching, protesting, and advocating for a just America. They are performing these acts of love and civic responsibility because they are fully aware that a reality that we cannot say we are the greatest country in the world when there are so many who continue to maintain a system of systemic racism against black people. We, as a city, have chosen to actively support justice for all and equality for all. Equality requires that Black Lives Matter in this city and in this country. Millions of people of all races and creed in Plainfield, in the county of Union, in the state of New Jersey, across these United States, and the entire world are fully awake to the injustices faced by black people and have decided that they wish to live in a world in which Black Lives Matter. This expression of love and reforms that are occurring across this country from corporations, governmental institutions, and every corner of American society is overdue but welcome. If you do not believe we should be painting our streets with the words Black Lives Matter or you are uncomfortable that we, as a society, are publicly acknowledging the centuries of oppression against black people, you need to look in the mirror. You need to read the United States Constitution, and you need to question whether or not you truly believe in the founding ideals of this country in which it states, "All men are created equal." Black people in this country cannot afford to and could never afford to provide the unfair advantage that so many have received as a result of this suffocating system of systemic racism that has been levied against black people in these United States. I, we, will never apologize for doing anything we can to stamp out systemic racism in every form. We will continue to place Black Lives Matter signs around this city until we no longer need to do so, and you will know when the day, when that day has arrived because it will coincide with the end of systemic racism. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me the time to speak to these very important issues. Thank you. That's the call.
Thank you. More than I expected, but certainly relevant and emotionally charged and true words that were supposed to be. So, just to clarify, I mean, I can't imagine that the cost was actually that expensive. I mean, is that even the point of the cost, you know, in dollars and cents?
That may be the point to some, but it is not the point to me nor should it be to people of good conscience.
All right, we'll move on to, thank you, Mayor. Director Jackson, you have a presentation?
Yes, I do want to talk a little bit about parking. We've been talking about parking, at least with the public, for the past six months. Aliqua, if you can start the presentation. We did, there was a study done in 2016 on parking, and we recently took a look at parking as part of the master plan process, and the group that was hired to do that is Timothy Haas, which is known in the parking field. Aliqua, the next page. So I want to talk about, first of all, the recommendations around parking administration and management. And the recommendation here is to consolidate the parking system into a centralized, single responsibility center specifically for parking administration and management of Plainfield's public parking resource. Today, parking is spread across several organizations in terms of accountability. The police department does the enforcement through the Parking Bureau Division. Public Works does the maintenance of the parking lots themselves, and then Finance takes in the revenue and accounts for the revenue associated with parking. But we don't have a single individual responsible for parking in the city of Plainfield. And so the recommendation here is to have single accountability for parking administration and management within the Plainfield. And as you can see from the notes on the slide, we're talking about accountability meaning an individual who council and the mayor can go to and ask any question, or the public can go to, around parking. That person would be responsible for staffing, for making sure that their SOP, standard operating procedures, manage the parking inventory and availability, maintain parking facilities and equipment, manage track revenue and expenses, manage and track performance, because there are key metrics in managing parking. The next slide, Aliqua, please. It goes further to say that we should really create a Plainfield Traffic and Parking Committee to fill and address comments, concerns, and the challenges associated with public parking in Plainfield. And we are recommending that be comprised of representatives from the Parking Division, Economic Development, the Police Department, the Division of Public Works, the Signal Division, and have the Executive Director of the CID participate on this committee, because much of the public parking that we're talking about is in the commercial business district. Next, Aliqua. Parking management strategies. And again, these are best practices, and these were the recommendations from Timothy Haas. Make existing parking more effective and increase the capacity of parking facilities. Now, what do we really mean by that? Create shared parking opportunities, create shared loading zones, maximize existing street parking by restriping, creating compact car spaces in our parking lots, designated shared areas for motorcycles. So instead of having a motorcycle take up an entire parking space, there would be an area where motorcycles could be parked. Provide parking information to users in terms of when is it available, pricing, travel options, all of those kinds of things. And also reduce the future parking demand, and we do that by creating walkable, transit-oriented neighborhoods. And so, best practices say that you can increase your parking inventory up to 20% by making some of these changes immediately. So the next slide. And adopt an appropriate pricing structure. Pricing drives parking behavior. It has been proven over and over again. So you want to ensure that the parking space is virtually always available. So in some of our more heavy-traveled streets where people can walk in and get something, grab something, or somebody could go in and grab something, those parking spaces are not available. And they're not available primarily because of our pricing structure. So people get to stay on those parking meters, street parking meters, all day. And sometimes it's the business owner and their employees that are using that available parking space. So we want to make parking, convenient parking space available to delivery, service, errands, and shoppers. We want to encourage long-term parking used to less convenient spaces, and we'll talk about how we get them to the less convenient spaces. We want to make payment flexible for users and more cost-efficient. So we're still fishing in our pockets for quarters versus using an app that allows us to use the credit card payment. Generate revenues so motorists help pay for the parking and the facilities that they use. So that's part of parking management strategies. Next slide. Parking enforcement and curb management. So again, this is a best practice, produce and track enforcement reports related to ticket issuers by type, zone, meaning area, and parking enforcement officers. So a PEO has standards in terms of how many tickets that they should be issuing an hour. And so that's managing our parking. Ensure PEO staffing and zones are consistent to ensure regular enforcement, consistently enforce time limits on downtown streets to promote turnover of conveniently-located parking for retail and commercial patrons. Extend enforcement hours in the downtown area instead of stopping at 6:00, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Thursday, Friday evenings. Enforce on weekends, which we don't do today, Saturday. So provide parking enforcement officers with specific customer service and conflict resolution training. Establish, a lot of towns have a management plan for event parking, so we need to establish, we're creating an event center at the PNC Bank. And so we need to come up with a plan on how we manage event parking. The next one. This is just a sampling, it's not the complete list of parking rates in some of the neighboring towns, and you'll notice that the on-street rate, 50 cents per hour, you know, we're consistent with some towns, some towns go up to $1.50 an hour, but where we're actually very low is on our permit parking daily rate. We're charging $2 for the daily rate for city-owned parking lots. Even New Jersey Transit in Plainfield charges $4 a day for New Jersey Transit parking, and you'll see that the rest of the towns go anywhere from $5 to $12 for their daily rate. And you can see a little of it, even on the long-term permit, the annual permits, we're even lower on those as well. And so we need to take a look at our fee structure and price our parking accordingly. So that's part of what we need to address. The next slide. So, the mayor has established a parking plan committee. That committee consists of AJ, Director Burgess, Director Dabney, Ricky Garts, who's our CFO, myself, Marilyn Nieves, and Ron West. So we are to, our charge is to establish a parking organization and plan that will meet existing and new development needs, so meet the existing parking demand as well as the new demand. And that plan will include an organizational structure, a staffing plan, equipment, parking fees, and wayfinding signage. We have nothing that tells people where public parking is in the city of Plainfield. We have no signage that directs you to the appropriate parking area, so we need to increase that. And enforcement. We are to ensure that the parking revenue generated covers expenses, and the expenses are more than just additional staff. Today, we have, technically, we have three parking enforcement officers, but really we only have two that are operating because one is out. We need to, you know, look at staffing, a look at full-time versus part-time enforcement officers, we need to look at our equipment. So today, you could put a sticker on meters and you can have pay-by-app immediately. So we need to look at our equipment and our strategies, signage. We need to improve our parking facilities. Sometimes people don't use those facilities because they're not well-lit, they're not well-stripped, those kinds of things. So we need to improve the parking facilities, and it is our intent to complete a plan and implement those recommendations by the end of 2020. That is it for the parking presentation. I wanted to give you an update because I know there are going to be questions related to some and comments related to some of the items on the agenda. Thank you, Council President. Council President?
Oh, yes, someone, thank you very much for that. Are you going to give the COVID-19 relief fund updates as well?
Yes. For the Plainfield, and that's the one that is for residents, the Plainfield COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Fund, we received 44 applications, and that represented approximately $27,000 in requests. Of those 44 applications, 12 applications were approved. So that's 12 that have been approved, and that's worth $7,000 that has been awarded. There are 15 pending applications, and an application may be pending because they haven't provided us all of the information we need to award the funds. There are other applications where they've applied and they have been referred and handled by the Plainfield Action Services. So there are things that, services that Plainfield Action provides that we're able to put some residents in touch with those services. And there were some that were denied because either they were missing information, they weren't actually a Plainfield resident, et cetera. So that's the report on the Plainfield COVID-19 Fund. The pending applications represent about $9,000, and so it is our hope that we will be awarding that soon. The committee includes Donna Morris, Vanessa Delgado, and Ricky Garts. That is the committee for that particular fund. The UEZ COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Fund, the committee includes Ron West, Brittany Claybrooks, and that may be Vanessa Delgado on that committee, but anyway, so that committee has been awarding those applications. There were 20 applications that have been received to date, 142,000 in requests, so that represents 142,000 in requests, and this is for all the small businesses. 16 were approved. Of those 16, there has been 112,000. Of those sixteen, there has been $112,000 awarded. There were two incomplete applications and there are two pending applications. So that's just a brief update on the COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Funds. We get weekly reports from the committees related to those particular funds. So we are helping Plainfield residents and we are helping Plainfield small businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to our business this evening. The consideration of, we don't have any consideration of public hearings, second reading, and final passage. So we'll move straight to public comments for resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Once unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. We have Mary Burwinkle, you've been unmuted. If you may speak. Hold on. Mrs. Burwinkle, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak, please.
I'm sorry. Good evening. I hope everybody's healthy. On MC 2020-14, I am looking at page twenty-one of the report that was attached to the agenda item. And again, this is just to comment on parking. But for the east front street development, the residential dwelling units are going to have point-eight spaces per dwelling unit. So does that mean somebody is going to be driving eighty percent of a car? I'm not, I'm really concerned about not having enough parking for residents who are coming into this, into the city now, especially since with the pandemic, you know, restaurants, retail, transit is not being used the way it was before. And I don't know how long that'll be. I hope that's not forever. But, and I hope the market will take care of some of these issues. But anyway, thank you very much.
Allowed to speak?
Mr. Johnson, I think there's some echo. So you might have two devices that are hearing each other, and that's what produces the echo. One of them needs to be on mute. This portion of public comment is just for resolutions being considered this evening. If you don't have a comment on a resolution being considered this evening, we do have public comment that goes after this.
Oh, okay. My misunderstanding there. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. We'll hear from you later. All right. Seeing no one else. Can I have a motion to close public comment on resolutions being considered this evening?
Moved.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposition, abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. All right, move to resolutions now. Clerk, would you please offer the resolutions?
Resolution two eleven twenty authorizing appropriation to the Cologie and Simmons.
Okay, are there, I need questions from counsel. I'm going to look for questions. Anybody?
Yeah.
All right, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, so Mr. Corporation Counsel, I know that the courts have been closed for the past two months. So can you just kind of explain for the benefit of the public what they've been doing during this time?
What the courts have been doing?
No, what this firm has been doing for the city during this time. Because some residents may think like, well, the courts are closed, they can't be working. So just kind of explain what they've been working on.
Yes, Councilwoman. The law firm of Cologie Simmons handles our workplace harassment investigations. Every individual who makes a claim of workplace harassment, whether it be based on gender, race, sexual orientation, anyone feels they've been a victim of sexual harassment, has the right to make that claim to the Personnel Division or to my office. And every claim is investigated. And based on that investigation, certain remedial measures may be recommended. That is done by the outside law firm of Cologie Simmons. They've done an excellent job. They were previously appropriated for $10,000. This is an additional $15,000 because we have taking, taken a, you know, we do have a commitment to making sure that all claims are investigated. And that requires attorneys to do that work. And so we're seeing that through, and we require this money to get that done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking for any other questions from council members?
I have a question, Council President.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Mencello, roughly, how many claims are, do they have? I mean, are you able to tell us that?
Certainly, I would say at the moment there, the, this is an approximation. They're probably handling roughly about five claims. However, the amount of claims can be, can always be a barometer of how much work is needed because one claim could require the interview of numerous witnesses. And that is obviously time-consuming. So although we don't have a lot of claims, each claim is investigated fully, and that requires a great deal of time.
Which would be the reason for the increase?
That's correct.
Requested, okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Looking for any other questions from council? All right, do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twelve twenty, authorizing a chapter one fifty-nine resolution and approval to amend the calendar year 2020 municipal budget.
Okay, looking from, looking for questions from council members.
Council President, I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
So in this resolution, there was a contribution from a private source. So what's the protocol for receiving private donations? What's the protocol for receiving private donations? Have these donations been allocated to a specific line? Is it a private source because that person wishes to remain anonymous? And also, can you explain more about Clean Communities and what that program is?
First and foremost, that $200 contribution was from a person who wanted to remain anonymous. It has not been allocated to a specific purpose at this point in time. And we have people who on occasion do give money. Most of the times, it's earmarked to something specific.
So what's the protocol if somebody wanted to give money to the city?
The protocol is that they would, you know, if they raise a question, you know, we would direct them, you know, to my office and/or the Chief Financial Officer, and they would write a check to the city of Plainfield. And if they wanted it restricted, they would tell us specifically what they wanted it restricted to. And if it's restricted, then we would set it up into a specific account that would limit its use.
Thank you. Can you speak to the Clean Communities Program?
Clean Communities, you know, is what you see going on in the downtown area. It's something we do in conjunction with the PMUA. And you'll see in the next few weeks that that Clean Communities Grant will be earmarked and sent over to the PMUA. And that supports the individuals that you see moving around the downtown area, cleaning up the sidewalks, you know, removing trash and rubbish from the area, but that's what that's for.
Thank you.
Looking for other questions from council members? All right. Yeah, I think the Clean Communities is great. And I know our residents are always looking and giving us heads up when we see areas that are falling in disrepair or excessive debris. You know, so I appreciate us being able to divert some resources to that. So I think that's, that's good. All right, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two thirteen twenty, authorizing a refund due to a state tax.
Okay, I'm looking for questions from council members. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two fourteen twenty, requesting the city of Plainfield to acknowledge acceptance from the US Department of Homeland Security for personal protective equipment for the fire division.
Looking for questions from council members?
Council President, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Davis?
This question could actually answer a few of the other, this answer could answer a few of the other questions that I have. So where in the budget is the cash match coming from for these different grants that the fire department is looking to accept?
We happen to have a cash match line.
Thank you.
Council President, question?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Just for the sake of, first of all, we know that, I understand, and I'm pretty sure my colleagues understand that we will benefit. But just for the sake of knowing, and maybe Battalion Chief Reed can tell us just to touch on what are some of the types of safety equipment that this resolution is talking about? Can you just shed some light on that for us, please?
Sure, go ahead, Battalion Chief Reed.
The AFG grant we normally apply for every single year. It's a yearly grant that comes out. And the reason why we have so many resolutions this round for the grants is because the AFG grant this year, we wrote two separate grants for the same grant period. If you notice, there's a regional grant for technical equipment, and then there's another grant with the same AFG, FEMA AFG grant that is for personal protective equipment. In 2007, we received three hundred, I think it was $334,000 for PPE to replace it back thirteen years ago. We're reapplying because in fifteen years, we're required to replace firefighter gear as per NFPA. So we're at the thirteen-year mark from when we first got the grant, when we were awarded 2007. So we're applying this year as a micro grant along with the technical equipment grant that is also for tonight's reading. So if we didn't get the resolution or the grant awarded for the technical equipment, we would be able to have a backup to be able to get PPE that would assist with funding for turnout gear. But the turnout gear itself is a complete sets of bunker, buncured pants, jacket, and boots for all the members.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two fifteen twenty, authorizing the city of Plainfield to acknowledge acceptance from the US Department of Homeland Security for the use of personal protective equipment for the Plainfield Fire Department's response to COVID-19 in the amount of $280,844.09.
Any questions from council? Okay, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Two sixteen, authorizing the city of Plainfield to acknowledge the submission and acceptance of a grant from Gary Sinise Foundation.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
How many members of the fire department will be able to take advantage of this training?
The whole division will take, will take part of this training. And also, we did set up with North Plainfield and South Plainfield, which we work closely on mutual aid for the first respondent mutually companies into the city. We coordinate with the operation deputy and with their municipalities so that they could sit in with this training also. The company that we contracted originally and got the proposal for $11,000 said there wasn't a problem to facilitate this and that they would be more than willing to give the most updated training and the information for COVID-19 that's up to date.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, Councilman, good.
How long is the training, Chief Reed?
We broke the training down into four separate days. That way it would eliminate overtime. So the class is going to be given four days for eight hours. The class consists of a, the first portion will be a lecture, which we're going to wind up holding here at Fire Headquarters in the apparatus bay so we could keep social distancing and obviously keep within the parameters of how many people we could have in a group at one time, what is going to be mandated. And then there's, will be a technical portion of the training in the second portion where they'll actually go through and they'll do mass decon and decon. And it's not just for COVID, but any type of biohazard, anything that we would be interact with. So we're trying to train us for a little bit more in the future, not just focus just on COVID.
I was going to mention that because down the line, anything can come up. You know, COVID probably will come and go, but down the road, we may need it for something else. Thank you so much. No further questions, Council President.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? All right, do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two seventeen twenty, authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant for the technical extrication equipment trailer and training.
Okay, I'm looking for questions from council members. Sure, Councilwoman.
If the Battalion Chief could just walk through the, the equipment and what the uses apart with respect to the other municipalities included in this resolution.
Okay, this is for technical equipment. It says extrication equipment. But when I say technical, technical means that trench, confined space, building collapse, emergency shoring, anything, a high angle, anything to do with a technical operation. One thing that all the municipalities are seeing, especially Plainfield, is the infrastructure development, which we're seeing a lot more construction incidents when it has to do with demolition or just the construction of the infrastructure. So this equipment is very costly for all the municipalities. And when we apply for a regional grant, it gives us a higher, I guess, mark with AFG that AFG likes to see that we're using multiple agencies for one resource. And with the communication with all of us, you know, we could use it as needed. We wrote up MOUs between South Plainfield and North Plainfield. Plainfield would house the trailer and the equipment at all times. We would be the ones that would distribute it if called upon. And not just that, this grant is also included all of the training that would be with this equipment that we would receive. So this would be a very big benefit financially for the city if we were to get this because it's something that, that us as the fire department is going to be looking to say in the future, if we don't department is going to be looking to say in the future, if we don't get this through a grant, we're going to have to try to request it through CIP or through some sort of other funding.
So just walk me through how that works. So Plainfield would, would house it. And in the event of an emergency, let's say in South Plainfield, they would ask for, I guess, municipal aid, right, kind of a thing. And then we would have somebody on every shift capable of delivering that equipment to that site in South Plainfield. And then do we manage that equipment during that emergency? Or we just deliver it and then their staff or firefighters use the equipment?
The way the MOU is going to work is that when any municipality calls for this equipment, obviously, a technical incident is, is a very, very manpower-intensive operation. If you're talking like a trench or you're talking a confined space, there's a lot of things that go, that goes into it. And not so much what goes into it, you need that technical expertise there. So what would happen is all three agencies agreed that we would respond together with a certain group of individuals. It's not yet set in stone how we would divide that up, but it would be a group effort between all of the participate agencies to effectively, you know, perform the technical incident, whatever it may be, when requested.
Okay, that's great explanation. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman. Looking for any other questions from council members, if any. Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two eighteen twenty awarding a contract to NJSP Construction to remodel and reconstruct the bathrooms at the fire headquarters.
Looking for questions from council members? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two nineteen twenty authorizing the award of a contract for the Brookside Place Drainage Improvement Project.
Looking for questions from council members?
Have a question.
Councilman Good.
Of course, this is wonderful, what they're doing, but I can't help but ask, are there any plans to do any more drainage improvement in the city? How often is it done? Because there is no secret. It's no secret that we do have drainage issues from the east end to the west end. So, and what puts this one out in front of all the other ones? Can someone explain that to me?
Well, good question, Councilman. This was very noticeable out there. We came upon it when a car, when tide blew out on, in a hole, there's a hole there, it was a collapse. So we would have to go there and fix the pipe and do some work. And this was, is being done with CDBG grant funding, Community Development Block Grant Funds to do this. Yes. And as we go along and funds may be available, we'll look at other areas of, you know, the city that can do that type of work too. But as far as the flooding issue, that's certain apart. This is a drainage issue that had to be done and addressed. And a fundee was available for that in that area.
Thank you. I noticed that the three bids that were submitted, the one that has it was, is charging like half of what the other two wanted. I mean, the other two wanted double the amount. My question, and I'm going to ask this question for this, and also I'm probably going to jump ahead of myself for another resolution. When you receive bids, where do you cap off? How many bids do you look for? I mean, how many, you know, because my thing is if a bid is low and you, why not try and get more bids to see if you can even get one lower than that one? You understand what I'm saying? If you have three, why not five?
Well, Councilman, remember, this is done, this is a public advertising bid. So everybody here can submit a bid. This is advertising newspaper and everywhere, okay? People submit. So we, the more the merrier. We love more and more competition. However, we try to go to lowest responsible bidder.
So are you saying that the three are the only ones you've received?
Correct.
Okay, because on another resolution, there were, there were a few bids, but that question would apply to that resolution as well. Why not take ten instead of seven? Or ask, you know, try to get ten to, to top, you know, you understand what I'm saying? To get lower than the one that you accepted. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, the thing is, again, we publicly advertise this, right, in the papers, okay, online, et cetera. Whoever submits a bid, we dissect everything, look at everything over, and we go to lowest responsible bidder by law. And that's how we do it. And we encourage more bidders to apply. Some do, some don't. More the merrier, though.
But my question, was that the amount, just the three? No more?
That was it, right. By law, we couldn't exclude anyone unless they didn't have all the paperwork. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well.
Looking for any other questions from council members? Seeing none. Can we have a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twenty dash twenty authorizing the award of a contract to Fisher Contracting.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twenty-one dash twenty authorizing approval for a lease agreement with Wah Chung Realty.
Looking for questions from council members regarding this resolution.
President, I have a question.
Sure, Councilwoman Davis.
So I have a couple of questions. One, why are we entering into a five-year lease with this property owner? It says that the city is responsible for repairs. Do we know if there are any repairs necessary to the building already and how much it will cost us to repair any necessary repairs? How come there, couldn't move to any other city-owned property, such as the bilingual daycare, South Second Street Youth Center, you know, other city-owned spaces that we already have? And also, as a way to save money, how come we couldn't look at creative staffing techniques like we have now, where we have people working on a modified schedule? We have people working from home. Why couldn't we continue that and then save the city money instead of leasing a new space?
Would like to take that.
I'm here. Just answer your question. What a location, we get a location that's close in the close proximity as where this located. It's good to take advantage of it. Currently, we have twenty workers that's working for us. And we're not going to be on a modified schedule forever, Councilwoman. Those hopefully get back to where we all at full status. But the social distancing is the key to everything for us and physical distancing. So we're trying to do everything we can for the health, safety, and welfare of all the employees. Right now, it's well overcrowded over there where we currently are. And to get something that's directly across the street from where we're located is good not only for the employees, but for the public as a whole when they do come back, come back to work. But I think it's best for us to be there. And the five-year lease they go for now, I want to lock this in so we can have that for five years, the location, doing to do. So it's best, I think it's the best interest of the city of Plainfield to do this and move forward. And this was something that I want to just put out there and emphasize this. This was done well before the pandemic took place. Been looking for a location where we could go. And I found the police were going to move to the other facility, the old parking facility. I thought this would be ideal for us to move to, to have our employees there. And again, it's about to help safety and welfare of the employees. Physical and social distancing is the key to everything that we're trying to do. And I think that space across the street is ideal for what we need to do.
All those questions, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So I understand the whole social distancing and physical distancing of it. But in a time where other entities and other agencies and companies are looking to work more remotely and move a lot of their things online and take away some of that office space and some of that retail space necessary, why do, what's the rationale behind us getting a lease somewhere else when we can have, why can't we have people work on a modified schedule for the long term?
It's a good question. Based on the work that we're doing, a lot of stuff is done during the day because we're talking about UCC inspections, et cetera. And it's a good thing the city of Plainfield is booming right now with construction, and that's going to be for a long period of time. So the space that we need is there and we need to take advantage of it now. Another question, this is the best thing for us. It's a great move to make things happen for the city of Plainfield. And we're going to stay busy and there's no way everybody can be on a modified schedule because we have property maintenance and we have UCC. And this is done during the day. So modify schedule, I'm going to need them on these type of hours to get things done. So this is the best thing for us and I would never want to let an opportunity like this get by us. And again, I'm going to emphasize in the proximity of where it's located, beneficial to us and for the public as well. When we do get back to full service, which I expect to happen the way down the road, and we'll be prepared for that because I'm going to make everything safe for all the employees. Because right now, it's really, conditions are poor the way everyone's working on top of each other. So it's beneficial to us all the way around. And I think you've been upstairs from time to time. It's beneficial to us to do this.
Yeah. So, so I guess sometimes, you know, regarding this issue, sometimes there could be just a, sometimes a generational divide in terms of what's the most efficient way to work. But maybe you could just speak to the level of productivity of the workers when they're on a modified schedule versus when they're in the office. Is there a decline in productivity? Or what are the major concerns of working from, from home or remotely?
Well, it's nothing like working, good question, Council President. It's nothing like working in an office. Of course, you can be more efficient and effective when you're inside the office because you're dealing with the people in the firsthand with phone and talking to them remotely. It's okay, but it's not like without construction, individuals too. They're out there working, they've never stopped doing what they do because they can do the work because it's most construction jobs. It's not like interior inspection like our property maintenance folks have to do. Mobile, secretary, but when it comes to the workers, inspections, they have to be in the building getting the work done. So we need, we know we need that, period. And again, this will help us be more proficient as well when we do go back to full service as a result of not longer lines upstairs where we're currently on City Hall, by UCC folks will just go right across the street, do what they have to do and get the information they need and go. Right now, you're there for property maintenance or you're there for construction. So it's a combination. By separating this the way this is, it'd be more proficient for everyone.
Any other questions from council members?
I have just two quick questions.
Sure.
What, how many people are going to be moved over there and what was the city paying previously for the rent when the narcotics officers were using it?
Well, narcotics officers using, a good question. They were paying thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars a year for over five-year period each year. We're going to pay thirty-nine sixty, as you see there, for the first year. And there's five percent increases thereafter. And they did five years. I mean, I want to credit, I mean, what the landlord did, five years without an increase, they did nothing. So they're looking, they think this should, this should be increased. And now we're trying to work with them to try to get a low rate, but that's the rate they chose.
And how many people are going to be located over there?
It's going to be ten in ten in each location.
So, I'm sorry.
Ten employees at each location.
Ten in City Hall and ten over there?
Yes.
Any other questions from council members? If no more, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
I'm in favor to oppose resolution passes. Resolution two twenty-two twenty authorizing approval for lean placement for property cleanup.
Any questions from council regarding this resolution? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twenty-three twenty updating the area in need of redevelopment, redevelopment for scattered owned parking lots.
Looking for questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Director Jackson, can you tell us where this lot is located?
Still on.
Okay, this particular lot is where Supremo is located. So it was inadvertently put in the area in need of redevelopment. So we're correcting that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one, Council President. It has to do with the, the, her presentation earlier. Would we be able to, can that be emailed to us, the presentation?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twenty-four designating eight oh three South Avenue Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper for certain city properties.
Any questions from council members? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two two-five twenty authorizing the execution of a right-of-way entry agreement between the city of Plainfield and TODD West Urban Renewal LLC.
Looking for questions from council members regarding this resolution.
Yes, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Council.
Director Jackson, can you come to just explain what this resolution is seeking?
Okay, so what it allows is for the developer, since we have not transferred the property to the developer as yet, it allows the developer to go in and do environmental preliminary testing. The developer is responsible for any environmental issues, but this allows them to begin to go in and do testing on the property.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Motion two twenty-five authorizing the execution of a right-of-way agreement between that's what we did. No, we did that already. Resolution two twenty-six authorizing the execute, the execution of agreement with the County of Union.
Looking for questions from council members? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two two-seven twenty declaring racism as a public health crisis in the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
I want to commend Director Brown on this resolution. I think that when we talk about Black Lives Matter, as the mayor started out the meeting, it's important to understand ways in which systemic racism affects people of color, not only in the criminal justice system, but in the healthcare system, in the housing industry, and just across the gamut of everything that we interact with in this country. So I really appreciate this resolution, and I look forward to seeing more substantive and physical thing, intangible things that helps us to improve the quality of life while defeating systemic racism.
Preach. Okay, any other questions or comments from council, council members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two twenty-eight twenty authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the restoration and protected glazing of stained glass windows at the Plainfield Performing Arts.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
The restoration and protecting The restoration and protecting and protective glazing of the stained glass windows, like how much of our priority is it to get this done? Like if we don't get it done, is it going to have an adverse effect on the art center?
It will have, what will happen is the window and the glazing that currently exists may begin to deteriorate. And so what that means is around the windows, you'll get wood rot. And then it will cost us more to restore it.
Thank you.
This is a form of being proactive before you have to pay more down the road. A lot of people don't know much about stained glass, but it, there's maintenance involved. And if you don't pay attention and bring attention to the upkeep, it will fall out. And to have some of those things replaced is very hard to do, so. This could be a whole lot more.
Question, the the resolution says that there's a grant associated for it that does not have a dollar amount on that grant. Is it equal to the thirty six?
It is nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
And then the city's paying, what budget?
I'm sorry, repeat that question?
The difference of that is coming out of what budget line?
It comes out of the capital line. For thirteen thousand.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
All those in favor? Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved. Thanks.
Resolution two two-nine twenty authorizing the professional services agreement between the city of Plainfield and the Plainfield Area Humane Society.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis.
Director Brown, can you tell us what type of impact moving animal control services to the Plainfield Area Humane Society will have on residents and what are some of the benefits of doing this?
Well, first off, this is close to home. We often residents would have to go to Newark to get their animals if they were seized for whatever reason. Here, they will now just have to go to Rock Avenue, which is significantly closer. And the fees are less when you go to retrieve your animal. Those are the main benefits. I know that a lot of residents who've had challenges in getting to Newark, they weren't particularly happy with the care that their animals were seen in Newark. And I'm very confident that the Plainfield Area Humane Society would do a much better job.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes, Director Brown, you saw this coming, didn't you? You did, didn't you?
I'm sure.
Yes, okay, all right.
I have a question. Director Brown, first of all, I'm fully supportive of moving it. I think it's great. I think it'll even help the police department with the resources they have to dedicate babysitting dogs while they're waiting for associated to be able to get out here the next day. But I do have a question regarding the contract. The date timing, the dollar amount, we're doing a contract. We're only funding for the rest of this year. Is there a reason we're not just doing a contract for the rest of this year and then doing a calendar year contract in January or?
No, we wanted to make sure we had the one year locked in. And so that's the way we approached it. I actually understand what you're saying. We then began in January. However, the balance that we will have to pay will come out of the twenty twenty-one budget.
I mean, because we, with AHS originally on a calendar year contract, I know they've been on a month-to-month for a while.
Correct.
All right, okay.
That's correct.
Any other questions from council members? Again, Director Brown, you're to be commended for this partnership. This, it always warms my heart when we have a hometown organization that we're able to use and give business to, keep everything in right here in Plainfield. I know Plainfield residents are joyous of this partnership, so I'm glad that they were able to meet the requirements, so they were able to use them and, you know, I'm glad we're taking advantage of that at the first as soon as we're able. So thank you for that. Hearing no more questions from council, can we have a motion? Second, in favor? Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution two thirty twenty authorizing the city of Plainfield to accept nation of a stained weight piano.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion? All those in favor? Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved. Okay, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Clerk, will you read M C twenty twenty dash fourteen by title?
M C twenty twenty fourteen is an ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for the scattered city-owned parking lots and adjacent lots redevelopment area.
Are there any questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
While I absolutely appreciate Ms. Jackson's presentation earlier today, and I'm glad to see that the city is moving in the direction of creating a parking management plan because that has been one of the things that I have always asked about. Ever since we started talking about redevelopment of city-owned parking lots, my concern is that we are looking to pass a redevelopment plan today while we're still in the preliminary stages of creating a parking plan. So that's parking management. I guess I've moved from parking concerns to parking management concerns through the help of Director Jackson. So that is still my concern while we're talking about redeveloping these scatter-owned parking lots. So it's more of a comment than a question.
Okay.
I have a question, couple of questions.
Sure, Councilman.
So my understanding, reading the redevelopment plan, is that, is that Second Street, the parking off Second Street and Gabbit would, would be available for redevelopment up to ten stories and include parking. It, and that also includes East Seventh Street and Park, which is across from the Performing Arts Center. So these are going to be developments that create more parking need, to some extent, point eight, whatever the approved bulk standard is for each of those locations. And then still have to make up some sort of parking that is being eliminated that's currently there. I kind of, are these, first, my first question is how many parking spaces are we going to lose, not for the development itself, but for the public parking? And are those, would those parking facilities be managed by the parking authority or the parking, whatever we call it, parking enforcement?
Okay, so a couple of questions. One is, as it relates to the parking, let's talk about the one on Second and Gabbit. That particular development will include not only the tenant parking, whether it's residential or retail for that development, but it would also include parking, shopper parking. It would include parking for commuters. And so again, I talked a lot about shared parking and how that would work. We're going to get our first opportunity in Plainfield to see that work with the T O D D West development as we develop a shared parking agreement with the county, with the you, the Union County Improvement Authority. So again, counting them, we're going to count a little differently. That doesn't mean you get a dedicated parking space all the time. So remember in my presentation, I said making a parking space available at the right time for the right person. And so that particular development is going to include all of that parking. And the parking will be managed by the development company, not by our parking division. That parking would be managed, there are a lot of models, a lot of towns that have done that. And they would manage that parking facility.
Okay, and that is a similar concept to East Seventh Street?
Yes, it's a similar concept to East Seventh Street. It's also similar to the parking arrangement for adjacent to Blink Fitness. I call it Parking Lot One, it's Parking Lot One. And we decided to recommend in the redevelopment plan that we leave Parking Lot Eight, which is watch on to park behind Front Street, that we leave that as a parking lot for downtown. But there will be, what we're recommending is a number of improvements to that parking lot to make it more efficient. And so that will be part of our parking plan is those improvements. I think we've already had the city engineer begin to look at a parking design for that parking lot. So like I said before, we currently have parking lots, they're not efficiently designed. And so what we're going to do is create more inventory through the design. And we're going to employ some newer concepts like shared parking.
Okay, with respect to the West Front Street parking, that in particular also needs, and it's not isolated there, this is an issue in a lot of places in the city, is it's a dumpster disaster back there. And it also is the, you know, those parking spaces were intended to be the back of those retail buildings, but they were also supposed to be entrances from the rear parking. But they look like the rear of a building, you know, that they're not well maintained, the dumpsters are cattywampus all over the place. No one knows who owns what dumpster, there's garbage everywhere. So I think, I've never experienced an issue with the striping and the rowing of the parking. I'm sure it can be improved. I experienced just the ridiculously poor look of that parking lot. And there's one particular spot which I would say everybody on this screen is familiar with, right outside the back of Democratic Headquarters is a, is a weekly dumping ground of mattresses. So I think the whole back end of that area needs to be improved from a, from a look and feel standpoint, for sure.
Agreed, and that will be taken into consideration as we look at the parking lot. So we may be able to get more spaces by doing more appropriate dumpster management. And, you know, some towns have shared agreements around trash for business owners, so we may look at that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis? Councilwoman Davis? You're on mute.
No.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna? Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
I'm in favor to oppose this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Clerk, would you please read M C twenty twenty dash fifteen by title?
M C twenty twenty fifteen is an ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan for the South Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Area.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Call M C twenty twenty fifteen, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
It's unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, clerk, would you please read M C twenty twenty dash sixteen by title?
M C twenty twenty sixteen is the ordinance adopting the T O D D West Redevelopment Plan dated June fourth twenty twenty.
Looking for questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
So Director Jackson, in the amendment, it took out the introduced creative parking strategies without dividing the sites such as a parking lot. Can you just kind of explain that, that bullet point and what that means? Because we just talked about creative parking strategies.
Yes, that, as I recall, that particular bullet talked about dividing it. We're going to develop creative parking strategies, but it's not going to be that specific in the redevelopment plan. So the creative parking strategies here is shared parking. They are currently working on an agreement, as I indicated previously, with the Union County Improvement Authority for parking. So they'll provide probably about a hundred and fifty parking spaces and the additional parking on their property. And then the additional parking spaces will come from Union County Improvement Authority. So that, that is a correction because it wasn't in the last amendment.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Call M C twenty twenty sixteen, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Did you mute yourself? We can't hear you, Mr. Clerk.
Six in favor want to oppose this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. All right, clerk, would you please read M C twenty twenty dash seventeen by title?
M C twenty twenty seventeen is an ordinance to amend Chapter Nine, Licenses, Permits and Regulated Activities, Article Fifteen, Vehicles for Transportation of Passengers, Taxi Cabs, Section Nine, Fifteen, Twenty, Forms Information to Be Given, Sure, Troopers License Applications in Section Nine, Fifteen, Thirty-two, Owner's Responsibility for Fitness Drivers.
Are there questions from council members regarding this?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
So in this ordinance, we're taking out every section that says be able to demonstrate that you can read or write the English language. Is there a specific reason or rationale why we're taking that out?
Certainly, I, I can speak to that. Councilwoman Davis, currently, our ordinance requires that anyone who wants to operate a taxi in the city of Plainfield is required to read and speak English. It was this administration's position that that was an unfair barrier to employment in the city. I'd also like to commend our police director. Several licenses were denied based on this fact. Our police department could have simply continued to deny individuals, but working with our community, they said this is something we should reexamine. You can currently take a driving test in Spanish, so it is not a requirement to obtain a license. This comes with the support of both the police department and the entire administration. And we believe that this, just in fundamental fairness, is the right way to move the city forward when it comes to taxi cab licenses.
Thank you. So just a follow-up question. So does that mean that we're also going to have those applications available in both English and in Spanish? Are we moving towards making like applications and stuff bilingual?
I don't see any, I can't speak to what the police department can provide or the clerk's office regard to licenses, but there's no reason why we can't. And obviously I'll defer to the, the business administrator on our ability to do that.
The answer to that question is yes.
So do we have a timeline on when we are going to make it happen? Because I don't want to vote yes to this and then we don't have applications that are in Spanish as well as English because that kind of just takes away from what this ordinance is trying to do.
The timeline would be upon the adoption of this ordinance and the stopper period, but to be honest with you, even if this ordinance isn't adopted. But to be honest with you, even if this ordinance isn't adopted, we're trying to get all of our forms in English and Spanish regardless.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Mr. Clerk, you said trying, that means it will happen, right?
That means we're making every best effort to get that done as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved, Council President.
Okay Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2020-17, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Rantum?
Yes.
Vice President Armani?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. Okay, we now move to general comments. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker shall be allotted five minutes. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized and you will be unmuted. Once unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given five minutes, the floor is now open. Is it five or three, Clerk?
Five, yeah.
All right. Okay, Mrs. Bergwinkle, you are talking is now permitted. He's on mute yourself then.
Thank you so much. First of all, regarding the resolution for animal control services, I was very pleased to see that the city will now use the Plainfield Area Humane Society. I think this is good for our citizens, they don't have to go to Newark to try to find their pet. And I also think that it's good for a nonprofit who has been located here for a long time and is located here. So I'm really, I'm very happy with that resolution, thank you. Regarding the resolution regarding the PAC and the stained glass windows. I'd just like to make a comment that I think that if you're going to talk about a grant in your resolution or in your attachments. It'd be better to say what it is and then say that the whole cost of the project and where the rest of the money is coming from too, I think that would be helpful. I mean, I understand that you have to do this. I guess my concern about the PAC in general is the fact that the parking lot on East Seventh Street is now an area in need of redevelopment. And I know that that lot already has permitted parking for some of the apartment buildings that are in the area and existing already. So if you're going to build another apartment building there and you still have to take care of those people who already bought permits. And if you really want to have events at the PAC. I'm struggling to see how that would be accommodated without having a whole lot of parking across the street. And I'm an officer of a nonprofit in town who rented that place for a number of years when the church owned it. And we would hire private parking people to walk people across the street. And I know the lot was very, very crowded when we used it. So I'm concerned about, I'm concerned sort of about having the Performing Arts Center at all. Frankly, as a taxpayer, I know it's a historic building and I know it was a nice thing for the city to get a gift of it from the church. But it's an older building that probably had a bunch of deferred maintenance. And, you know, like, you're going to end up doing reglazing of stained glass windows. You're going to end up doing a lot of maintenance on it. And it really doesn't have that much space for a lot of people to gather, especially social distanced. So I hope that the city is open to evaluating, you know, how much use it gets and how much we have to spend on it to keep it up just over the course of time to make sure that we really should own it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. We now have Mr. James Johnson, unmute yourself and you may speak.
I'm sorry for interrupting before because this is my first time Zooming.
Not at all.
Yeah, excuse me?
Name and address.
James D. Johnson, 1128 Dorsey Place, Plainfield.
Thank you.
First thing I want to do, I want to thank Steve Hockaday for, when I called him, he came out and listened to one of my complaints that I had. And then also, Joel at Mills-Rantum. You came to our house and sat down with her because you are a true dedicated ward leader at all. Also, I want to thank the police department because for one of our complaints that we had about a certain person that came from South Plainfield every morning and created problems on this block when it pertained to parking. Warren Dabney was the first one to complain, he put it, complained for me. He put in a complaint with the police department. Police department came and spoke to this guy who left his car here, unmanned it for almost 10 months. And we, and the law states that you're only supposed to have the car on the street, I think for 48 hours. And I know the police officers spoke to him, but it didn't do any good because he continued leaving the car there. Only time he left this, only time he moved his car, when Steve from the PMUA had to come out to fix a drain or something in his house. Then he took the car and backed it up in front of our house and left it there for three more weeks. So what I simply did then, I had no choice but to call in. And what we were blessed about is that police officer Staten, or State, and I think his name was. He came out and investigated it and he obviously told them that they moved the car within 48 hours. They moved it, but he moved it back down the street again, which that's up to the police department what they do. But he's been what you call a total nightmare. We live on this block here, Dorsey Place is a very quiet block. This man comes from South Plainfield every morning, parks where he wants to park. Now I know that the street is free, but no one should have to live on a block where someone lives in another town that comes over and really harass you. When Steve was here from the PMUA, he would take a table I have, which was going to be given away or taken away. He kept moving the table up and down, up and down, and we have it on videotape. Saying that this is a free, what do you call it, the free, the street was free and so forth. And Steve saw what he was doing and he continued to do this. My thing is that why should he bring this, leave his car here, disrupt our lives on a abandoned car when in South Plainfield, you'll only allow two hours on the street that he live on, which is Lincoln Avenue. Two hour park, and so why should he come and bring that car that he cannot put on the street and leave it on this block? He has no respect for this block. I'm sorry that I did not turn him in a year ago when he came here. Because what he was doing then, he was taking, there's a drain on the side of his house. And what he would do, two to three times a day, he would let the water flow out into the street. And the water always had what you call like a rust color to it. And I said, why are you doing this? That's against the law. He gave me the impression that it was okay from Steve's department at the PMUA. Then I found out he was lying to me. So I am, like I said, I'm very pleased that the police department came out here to rectify the situation. But he's back to his old tricks again, and also I have to add this. I received a videotape of a white male walking down our driveway at nighttime. Looking up to check, we're assuming that he was doing this to see if we had video cameras around our house. First of all, there should be no one on our property at night. I know some of the white males on this block, it was not them. That looked like the same person who's been giving us trouble, I can't prove it. But once I know that it's him, as far as you will get that tape. Because this doesn't make any sense that we have to live like this at all. And my wife this morning, she saw him again out front there, just walking up and down in front of our house. We've been here a long time, I love this city. We've done a lot with the kids in the city, we help kids go to college in the city. And I should, and my family should not have to do this. Sean McKenna, I called you, you took over a week to get back to me. Then you lied to me, told me to give you a week to let you handle it. You went AWOL on us, I didn't hear from you anymore. You are, well, I can't, I won't say that. But the thing is, you didn't live up to the people in your ward. It took someone like Mills-Rantum to come here to talk to us about it. Why couldn't you represent those wards like everybody else represents their ward? And Mayor Matt, you're a good man.
Council President, Speaker signs up.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to, actually, to Mr. Johnson. So first of all, you and I spoke on the phone for over an hour. I walk your street at least once a day with my dogs to check on Mr., I won't say his name. And I drive down your street twice a day to try to identify the issues that we have had a concern about, that we talked about on the phone, one of which was the garden. Another of which was the parking issue. Now, you need to be clear that actually owns the house, he's on the deed with his ex-wife. So he's not coming from South Plainfield just to park on your street. Does, he is on the deed for the house. Parking in front of a house is not exclusive to that homeowner, it is annoying when they do that. He does need to move back. So I have been on your street at least three times a day to try to observe that and to talk to Mr. Jenkins. I did not need to come to your house and speak to him because we spoke for over an hour on the phone and went through all of the issues. So I have not gotten Mr. Jenkins' home. On the one occasion, the party, having a room, and briefly speaking to his wife. And prior to this issue, I dealt with them letting their dog run loose and had them sighted so that they stopped running, walking their dog off of a leash because the dog would run across the yard and run into other people in the backyard. So just to make it clear, not going, were unnoticed by me. But it was not something that I've been able to address with Mr. Jenkins, as I told you that I would. Versus having the police come out, which has not resulted in that car really being moved very often in a 48-hour period.
Okay, do we have any other speakers for public comment? Okay, I see, I see a resident here. Talking is permitted for you, Mrs. Popper. Unmute yourself and you may speak.
Good evening, Jennifer Popper, 816 Dixie Lane. I just have a quick question about the press release that was issued by the administration announcing the July 1st launch of the temporary one-time George Floyd Police Reform Commission. The process, it was noted, was to take approximately one month from the launch date, which was July 1st, to the presentation of the report. Can you tell us the dates and times of the two public sessions that have been promised for the citizens?
Okay, I'll allow someone from the administration on the committee to respond to the timeline. Or you could share the timeline, there's a sheet informational that describes that timeline as well. Perhaps that should be shared immediately with Ms. Popper and the community and the website. But if anybody can speak to it, if they have that in front of them, by all means.
Council President, I can respond to that. The report is still due at the end of the month. The commission has their deliberations, they have a meeting tomorrow, which they'll be deliberating amongst themselves. And they will be then scheduling the public meetings. Once they do that, that information will be made public, it will be placed on the website and distributed. So that information does not, we don't have that information at this time. Like I said, they'll be establishing that tomorrow and will inform the public at that time.
May I ask just one more question then about it? So they have, they have two weeks to hold two meetings, because that's one month from July 1st.
Two public meetings.
Two public meetings, that's what I meant, yeah, so two public meetings over the course of the next two weeks.
I've been generous with that, I see my council looking at me. All right, all right.
Five minutes though, but thank you.
So typically, the public comment is not a back and forth or a question and answer session. So I would ask any resident during public comment to ask all their questions. And then, you know, we can try to get a member of the administration to answer the questions afterwards. But it's not a back and forth section, but, you know, I thought it was a good question, I did allow it that time. Okay, so do we have anyone, anyone else for public comment? If not, then I will entertain a motion to close public comment. All those in favor? Any opposition, abstentions, public comment is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? This meeting is now adjourned, thank you all.